Call the Board of Supervisors to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Giomi.
Here.
Supervisor White.
Here.
Supervisor Horton.
Here.
Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Mayor Bagwell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're now on our invocation, and he is so used to doing this, he's ready. Hester Haskins, start us off with the great message.
Thank you. Our loving heavenly Father, we gather here today in a time where the seasons are changing. And so it always is, though, with the city, that there are decisions that need to be made and changes that need to be, need to be made as well for the improvement of the community. So I thank you that we have these leaders here and ask your blessing upon them, that you would grant them the clear understanding of the issues before them today and grant them a degree of wisdom where they would make good decisions on behalf of all people here in Carson City, that the quality of life would improve for all. Bless our mayor and these supervisors, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, thank you. So would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Again, thank you.
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're on our opening public comment. Denny, you have various, do you want opening?
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Supervisors. Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I'm here to ask that you take 7A off of the consent agenda that's relating, and B, or 10B, I believe that's the one. And I would also like to say that I've been to quite a few meetings. I don't have my schedule in front of me, so pretty much every meeting I can get to. And I was fortunate enough at each of those meetings to see the caring and the involved and the informed presence there of staff and community. I'm the least informed at most of those meetings, but that's exactly why I'm there, is to get more informed. And I'd like to encourage everyone to get to as many meetings as you can, but also to find out what each group is set to have in their purview of powers or authorities or interests. But as this is the board that finalizes every one of those committee's findings, I'm coming to you with several concerns that I have about Ronald D. Wilson Park. The considerations were made in a survey, and it was put out to the community whether they wanted the park to be divided into a half or a quarter of a dog fenced area and such. And just recently, I heard that the consideration for that area would not be packed granulated granite, it would be perhaps turf. Artificial turf is on my grid. I've been going to the governor's office, and I haven't gotten responses. Three months of going, on occasion there having sent letters. I just want their position on it. I feel that it's an under investigative item for the city, and I think that we are being negligent in that. We need to do more study before we're putting the considerations of putting it in parks where we have recreational areas. So already at the high school, I understand that. I'm opposed to it being there. I'm opposed that it got, the other area had gotten dumped in our landfill. I have a lot of things on my agenda today that aren't on yours necessarily, but I would like to have one other thing brought up. I brought it up at the historical management meeting just yesterday. Empire Cemetery. It's, I still don't, I still haven't got a real clear answer who owns it, who's responsible for, who's for the upkeep. And so I put it out there, and thankfully, they're gonna have at least a look at it. It's not their purview, per se, but they're gonna give me some feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Marlene.
Thank you. That's very nice of you.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of our neighborhood about the dog park in Ronald Wilson. One of the problems is Carson City Board of Supervisors associated funds and approval for plans to fence portions of Ronald Park off a large acres to the left of the play structure when facing the play structure for a dog park. Our neighborhood goals: to convince Carson City Board of Supervisors to allocate the approved funds for a dog park at Ronald D. Wilson Memorial Park to, instead of the fence, to repair the children's play structure at the park. Why? The park is currently a large open space of approximately one acre lovely paved walking trail, covered tables, seating areas, children's play structure. The park was created as a local neighborhood park because the streets do not have sidewalks. Families play on scooters, bikes, baseball, soccer in the open space all year long. The covered tables are used for birthday parties, picnics, and before the play structure was fenced off, it was full of children all year long. As a side of the play structure has been fenced off for over two years. Children will need to move to smaller, the smaller end of the park, which is closer to the Mobile Home Park, to play ball. It is likely many balls will go right into the Mobile Home Park, damaging property and requiring children to enter the park to retrieve their balls. It is a much smaller space to play. The neighborhood streets are not designed for the increased traffic that will certainly come from a new park, dog park, in this, located in this park. We already experienced traffic from people who do not live in the area, who, because of their attempt to cut to College Park. Non-residents drive very fast, and it is already frightening. Increase of traffic will only make it worse. Our small, quiet neighborhood will be overwhelmed with increase of traffic, parking, and noise. The parking lot at, the parking lot at the park is often full already with-
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Shirk, I have you listed next.
A written copy of my public comments and opinions will be given to the meeting clerk, so it'll be included in the published minutes of the meetings today held on March 7, 2024. Regarding the mayor's State of the City address, at the luncheon, sitting up front at the best table in the room was none other than Southwest Gas Company, who helped fund the luncheon. Bagwell has received money from the Southwest Gas Company for her political campaign. To those thousands of citizens who are struggling to pay their monthly gas bill, only to discover Bagwell has taken your money to fund her political campaign, is deeply offensive. She should not take money from any public services that collect fees from citizens and then use the money for her own political gain. Open and transparent is not Bagwell's demeanor. Just like Major League Baseball new uniforms, one can clearly see through the pants they wear. The same transparency applies to the mayor's State of the City address. What the mayor read at the luncheon from her cue cards came directly from the city departments themselves. Bagwell never made one statement, not one whatsoever, at the luncheon, as to what she hopes to accomplish in 2024 for the citizens of Carson City. Nothing. Zero. Zilch. Not a dang thing. Bagwell highlighted Colorado street repair. As usual, she failed to mention the downside of this, as she does on all subject matters, which was the major flood damage that occurred during construction. The city had to reimburse homeowners thousands of dollars due to the damage. At the luncheon, another of Bagwell's failures was that she did not mention the $21 million deficit in the city budget for street repair that occurred on her watch. Under Bagwell's leadership, the Board of Supervisors are considering imposing a general improvement district, which will only add additional taxes to citizens' property, and the board does not need voters' approval to do this. This new tax will never, ever pay this debt off. Won't happen. No way. No how. Bagwell had previously stated that there was a buyer for the Ornsby House. One would believe she would have been excited to provide an update to this, but nope, did not happen. Never will. In closing, the big question about Bagwell's reelection campaign of 2024 is, will she inform citizens she cannot serve the entire four-year term that she is seeking? As Bagwell will be termed out in 2026 and must surrender the mayor's position to the mayor pro tem. Regarding the '24 election this year, it is in the citizens' best interest not to vote for Bagwell.
Have a great day. John, you're next. And I will just make one public comment. It's not true that I cannot serve the term. So just-
Wait a minute. You can't make public comments.
Come on. I get to make them, too. Sit down. John.
I'm here to talk about the Ronald D. Wilson Dog Park. And I agree with the last speaker on that subject. And I just feel like this park is not needed. It's certainly not wanted by the neighborhood. I've walked that park twice a day for two years. When I found out about the dog park from one of the maintenance guys, I made it a point to talk to every dog walker and anybody that had a dog in the park, and everybody was against it. The people that walk their dog on a leash around the path are happy doing just that, and there are a few people, more than a few, that let their dogs off the leash. But, you know, it's about throwing a ball, it's about throwing a frisbee. It's, you know, they just, they're not gonna use it. I mean, the dog walkers and the people that have their dogs off the leash are using the park as it is right now. And I think it's an obscene waste of taxpayer money to have this, this idea implemented. I ask you to please pause this project and rethink it.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment, but is there any other? Okay. Oh, Robin.
Good morning. We meet again. Robin Orloff here. I'd like to support what I've been hearing, what I heard about Ronald D. Wilson Park from Denny and Marlene and John. I have real strong feelings about that park. It's a beautiful park, beautifully designed, lovely to walk in. I've worked in the Cottonwood Park next door. I've seen clients there, and they really value that park and the quiet and the integrity of the neighborhood. And I think bringing in more traffic and bringing in dog congestion is, would be against, perhaps, what they might feel. I can't speak for them, but I know the neighborhood is concerned. And that's a quiet park. Dogs aren't allowed there. Cats have to stay inside. So I also hope for a pause and maybe a reconsideration, and maybe have a dog park that's just designed specifically for dogs somewhere else in the Northeast, and not, and the money that we're spending to change this park, to rebuild it, might be used better in a designated dog park that's just for dogs. Also, I've heard that maybe there's an issue with horses there that's causing the design or the change of design. I would highly recommend that the city work with the Virginia Range Horse Advocacy Group. They're awesome. I call them. When there are horses on 50, they come right out. I think if there's an issue that the neighbors are having in that area, I think the Virginia Range folks would be happy to work with you and come up with another solution. Speaking of parks and rec, I'll move on. I had just a thought about the Silver Saddle Ranch, and I've walked, I've seen the, I can't talk very well this, I've seen the interpretive plaques, and they're excellent. But I'd like to maybe consider including the Charette of 2008, the citizens coming out. I think that's an important historical part of the Silver Saddle and Prison Hill Park. That's not included on the river overlook, river, on the Carson River Ranch, Silver Saddle Ranch overlook kiosk, or the kiosks in Silver Saddle. There's a timeline, but there's nothing about 2008 Charette. And our citizens got together to make sure that that part, that Prison Hill was protected from development and had a conservation reason to protect it. It would be nice to acknowledge that. Also, about the issues around the Buzzies Ranch Trail, I'm wondering why we're not asking the Carson Water Subconservancy District to get involved. We had some people talk at the meeting that are highly qualified, who've worked with the river for years and years. One, an Andy Aldax Award winner, and the others work for Carson Water Subconservancy. And perhaps if we have to change and modify the trail because of flooding, it has to be maintained for 25 years. I think there was a quote of 100,000 or 200,000. Maybe we could just make it a muscle-powered trail that's three feet wide, right next to the fence, bring it back if part of the trail is being impacted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Hey, I don't see anyone else. Do you want to, come on up? It's already green. You're good.
Okay. Well, my name's Mary, and I live in Cottonwood Mobile Home Park, and I just would like to let you all know that that is a beautiful little dog park, just the way it is. Dogs on leash, an occasional dog chasing a frisbee is totally fine with those of us that use the park. I mean, you're more apt to remember the dog's name than the people's names that you meet in the park. I mean, it is really nice. And as the previous speaker said, Denny, about turf, replacing the grass with turf, my thing is turf is made of forever chemicals. They will not break down. They will not decompose. And the amount, I mean, there are such things as grass, drought-resistant grass seeds that could be spread there. And not to mention injuries to the dogs if you do build a dog park with, she had the football injuries on the artificial turf and, you know, in the sports world. So I think that should be considered. And another thing, who is the contractor that's going to be getting the, the money for that turf, if it is turf that's gonna go in? Anyway, that's all. Everybody have a good day.
Thanks, Mary.
And come and walk around that dog park, and you'll see why we like it the way it is. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Okay. Do I have anyone else? Okay. Then we're gonna close the public comment period, and we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 6A, which is the approval of our minutes from January 31, 2024, of our joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? Nope. Supervisor Giomi, a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the Carson City Board of Supervisors and Carson City Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 31, 2024. And, oh, I'm not done. And the Carson City Board of Supervisors and Carson City Redevelopment Authority meeting minutes of February 1, 2024.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect. It was unanimous. Thank you. We're now on to our consent agenda. Item 7A is actually being tabled for further, for a future meeting. And then, of note, item 9A has late material. Item 10A has late material. Did any member want something else, hold or done? Mr. French asked for 10B. Is there any issue? You didn't discuss what an issue was on that item. I do have staff here, Mr. French. Can they, can they help you on this item? How about, we'll pull 10B, and I'll just take his public comment on the item. So we'll pull 10B for discussion, because he didn't disclose what he wanted to talk about. Other than that, Supervisor Giomi, a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of item 8A, 9A, approval of the late material, 10A with approval of the late material. All is presented and mentioned.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect. Ms. Shutey, was that a yes? Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Just wanted, I don't want to misstate it. Let the record reflect. It was unanimous. So we're now gonna, item 10B is a contract with Cimarron Construction for the lowest responsible bidder for de-watering building mezzanine slab repair project. Mr. French, you had public comment?
Denny French, thank you, Mayor. 10B relates to concrete damage. When I went through the, the material, the additional material, it didn't say was it a structural mishap, or, I'm sorry, structural issue? Was it a mishap of some major equipment changes? And was it something dropped? Was it, what was the cause of the issue? And, and is it something that can be patched, instead of having a structural redo of the whole area to make sure that that cement and concrete is structurally held in place or such? Was not really covered in this. So I think that there's more discussion necessary with what I read. It didn't cover that for me, and I'm just not feeling like I want a big money thing put in if it, well, I just don't have enough information to want to put that kind of money into it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Let's see. Do I have someone, come on up and just, you'll just give us the brief why. I think he's looking for the, you know, what happened to cause the damage. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Andy Hummel, Utility Manager. For the record, this slab in question is the second floor of our solids de-watering building. It's the first building as you entered the plant site, the tall block building there. That second story is essentially where the slurry, the solids from what comes out in the wastewater gets settled out and then digested in the tanks and broken down. And then, this last part of the process, we essentially use large centrifuges to fling as much water out of it as we can, so that then the solids can be disposed of. Those centrifuges are up on the second floor for gravity reasons, so then that material can load down into trucks below. Over time, there's a odor control system on that level. As you can imagine, that's kind of a smelly process. That's-
You're doing polite.
Yeah.
Good.
The source of the caustic materials that kind of degraded the top of that slab. That slab is, I believe it's 14 inches thick, a lot of weight up there, and vibration from those centrifuges. So over time, some of that caustic material out of the odor scrubber leaked out. And this is, we're talking 15, 20 years ago. We have nobody on staff that even remembers when we switched from using those materials, but enough of it got down in the concrete, degraded it about three inches down. We had a pretty extensive survey done of it. They came out, did some cores, sent them off to a specialized lab that can look at it under a microscope, make sure that damage didn't go too far down. And basically, what we found is that upper couple inches of the concrete, some of that upper matta rebar needs to be replaced. Basically, go in, chip it out, clean it up, replace rebar where necessary, and essentially patch it back.
Does any member have a question, sir, issue? Thank you. No. Do I have any other public comment? No, you can talk to him afterwards if you would like, though. There's no problem there. I guess the other question, is there a cheaper way to do it? He wanted to know if you could not, not do this contract. Let me just say it that way. And I think that's a valid question on every contract, right? Do we have to do it?
Yeah, it's one we've been watching for a number of years. We assessed it when we did the repair work and all the upgrades in 2018, looked at it then, and it's just slowly progressed over time. Our concern is if it gets too deep in that slab, we could have to basically pull that slab out and replace it, which would be, you know, three to six months at a minimum. Have to have equipment outside to do that process, because we can only shut it down for essentially a max of three days. So it could, if we let it go too long, it's gonna be really expensive.
And then not functioning as intended.
Yep.
Right. We might have some other unintended consequences.
Yes, unfortunately.
All right. With that, I didn't see any other public comment, too. Okay, Supervisor Giomi.
Move to approve the contract as presented and authorize the Public Works Director to approve expenditures of the 10% contingency if necessary.
I second. I have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect. It was unanimous. Okay, we're now on to Agenda Item 12A, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of two members to the Carson City Parks and Recreation Commission, each for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2028. Mr. White, a disclosure, please.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Pamela Leonard Ray is an applicant for the Open Parks and Recreation Commission appointments. Her father is a friend of mine, and I have recommended her for appointment to the Carson City Board of Equalization. While I make this disclosure in the interest of full transparency, neither of these connections constitute a commitment in a private capacity or would affect the judgment of a reasonable person in my position. Because abstention is required only in clear cases, I do not have a qualifying conflict and will be voting on this matter.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So first up, already sitting, ready to go, we have Michael Polansky. You'll, you'll have to, you've been through this process before or not? You'll, you'll have to, you've been through this process before or not?
Not here.
You're aware of how this is going to work? Or do you, would you like me to explain the process?
I believe I get an opening statement and.
Usually we do closing statements. So each of us will ask you a question or a series of questions. And then I let the candidate have any closing statement or remarks that maybe weren't covered in a question.
Well, I had a, an opening statement prepared.
You may do so if that's what you'd like.
Okay. All right. Good morning. My name is Michael Plansky. Thank you, Supervisors, Mayor, Madam Chair, for providing a public forum for my candidacy to sit for this interview for a seat on the Parks and Rec Commission to help improve the quality of life for Carson City residents and visitors with my talents, knowledge, experience, working collaboratively in groups, solving problems over my lifetime. I have lived and worked in Carson City since 2021 and have volunteered many thousands of hours here towards enhancing connection to the environment with inclusive outdoor recreation, mostly through disc golf course design development and activism since 2008 at Centennial Park. And more recently, Carson Ridge Disc Golf Park and interpretive trails guided by the objectives of the Land Water Conservation Fund matching grant that made it possible as Secretary of the Carson Ridge Disc Golf Club with our army of volunteers attracted by our vision there. We worked closely with Carson City Parks Recreation and the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation as partners to satisfy the grant requirements and open in 2019 and have progressively improved the park until the Parks Department took over management last year. I feel it is wonderful to see them now take the reins on this property. I was raised in the Bay Area, live in, lived in South Shore, Tahoe on the Nevada side for the better part of 20 years, where I developed a passion for many forms of outdoor recreation while advocating for land conservation and sustainable management. Today, I'm proud to say I'm a licensed landscape architect in my home state of Nevada. My focus fascination with disc golf, as reflected in my resume, centers around its unique potential as a modern, growing and accessible lifestyle sport that can serve many important civic functions while actively engaging with the surrounding landscape reminiscent of the Greek Agora, which I studied as a city planning grad student. Modeled from the royal and ancient game of golf, disc golf is more accessible to a much broader population without the cost, steep learning curve and strict tee times, while it offers the same attractive choices for engagement, solitude, reflection, competition, community, camaraderie and connection to the natural environment. Just like much can be learned from studying successful public squares to inform planning for parks and public, public space, there are myriad valuable lessons from my years of experience with disc golf design that are applicable to throughout the Carson City park system and its resources. I have visited and studied many of Carson City's neighborhood, linear and regional parks in preparation for this interview. I have come to appreciate the accessibility and connectivity of the parks and open spaces where I live in the North Ridge area. But I, I'm also critical about how and where some of the park design and planning can be improved to better serve the public. I look forward to sharing some of my perspectives in this interview this morning.
Thank you. Okay, then I'll start with the first question. Michael, what do you think the role is of parks in our community?
As I alluded to in my open, opening statement, I have always had a passion for the power of, of public space. And, and in today's day and age, we're increasingly in our cars and on our phones. I've always seen the civic engagement in inclusive public spaces as being the solution to, to so many of our society's problems and getting over prejudices. And, and a well-designed public park at the neighborhood or regional scale is very valuable tool to encourage civic engagement.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
Michael, there, as you already heard this morning, there are offering, there are often differing opinions on how a park should be programmed and used and what changes should occur. The Parks and Rec Commission is charged with making some of those decisions. How will you evaluate differing opinions to reach a conclusion?
Well, based on my, my training and experience in landscape architecture, what we're trained to do, and I think it's an extremely valuable process, is, is inventory and analysis. So before making any judgments or leading towards any design solutions is, is to get all the information and gauge all the stakeholders and, and likely engaging in activities such as charrettes, where we bring people together who are concerned so that we can, in the long term, that saves the city lots of, lots of time and money. And that's, that's the approach I would take.
Thank you.
Supervisor White.
No question today.
Supervisor Horton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you believe the role of the Parks and Rec Commissioner is in Carson City?
Well, as stated in my opening statement, in line with the, the, the mission of the Parks and Rec Commission to improve the quality of life for residents and visitors. In addition, I also feel to, to serve the staff of, of the Parks Department, to give them the, the best information and to, it makes sure to adhere to the, the Carson City Parks Recreation and Open Space core values of teamwork, collaborative communication, trust, respect, pride, stewardship, open-mindedness, creativity and innovation, which I, I think that's a beautiful set of core values. And I believe as a Parks Commissioner, you can make sure that they're consistently applied.
Great. What's your favorite park in Hawaii?
Oh, I guess I could just be biased and say Carson Ridge Disc Golf Park. But I, but I won't, I will say, my neighbor, I moved to the North Ridge neighborhood in 2021. A block away from me is, is, is Blackwell's Pond Park. I think it's a beautiful park that not only the, the, the programming, the design of it, the historic nature, it provides ecosystem services by recharging groundwater, providing environment for, for wildlife, viewing, the beautiful new playground structure that was just completed with natural landscaping around it. It's great just to walk down there, walk around it, exercise there. And, and the connectivity, which relates to the Unified Pathways Master Plan, the Linear Park along North Ridge connects to that park and, and the Lone Mountain Open Space Trail. So I'd say that local park especially.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey.
Hello. What is your philosophy regarding recreational access to user groups of varying ages, skill sets, abilities, needs, that kind of thing?
An important component of, of creating these, these public spaces where everyone feels welcome and safe is having a diversity of users there. And the more that families and their children are able to access different types of parks and amenities, the better. I would give an example with when we developed Carson Ridge Disc Golf Park, we put a lot of importance on, on the short course and it's shown a lot of success. The beginner disc golf course to make it welcoming. The concept of, of cues to care is very important based on often cited, Oscar Newman speaks of defensible space as far as safety for public spaces. And, and the nicer you make it and the more cared for a place is, the more accessible it becomes for, to, to let families feel like their, their, their children are safe and welcome.
Okay. Michael, we want to thank you so much for applying. I know it's a lot to come out for a public viewing on this, but thank you so much. You're welcome to wait in the audience and listen to the other interviews because at the conclusion, we will make our decision. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jacob?
Yes.
Okay. Don't think you've been through this process before. So generally what we do is each of us will ask you a question or two. And then at the conclusion, you can make a closing statement. Today, if you want to make an opening statement, you may, or a closing statement. It's your choice. And then you're welcome to wait in the audience and listen to the other interviews if you'd like because at the conclusion, we will make our difficult choice of who we're going to select, or two people we're going to select. So.
Sounds great.
Sound, okay? Did you want to make an opening statement or listen to all of our questions and then do, fill in anything you want?
Shoot away.
Shoot away. Okay, you're ready. Okay. So what role do you think parks play in the community?
I believe as a citizen in Carson City, in any city, recreation is a vital part to both community mental health and physical health. I grew up in North Lake Tahoe and so my whole life is recreation. I've worked for Boys and Girls Club and San Francisco Parks and Rec and the North Tahoe PUD and served on their commission. So I've really, I've really seen a lot of ways people need recreation and might not necessarily know they have access to it. So I want to become an ambassador for the city and for the community to show really what the city has to offer and ways the community members can give back to the recreation. So.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
Jacob, you were in the audience this morning. As you heard, they're offering different, there are often differing opinions on how a park should be used or, or programmed. How will you evaluate those differing opinions and desires to reach a decision?
I think a lot of what I heard, just for the example of the dog park, to me, that's a new blip on my radar, to be perfectly honest. But I, I heard a lot of things mentioned about the need for it. Some of the people who live in that community think that, you know, it's fine as is. But I can see, living right down the street from Sonoma Dog Park, how liabilities can quickly blow up and come out to your door. And so I could see the balance between needing to do something and not do anything. With this one, I, I would want to go see it and go talk to people and spend a day in the park and see really on my own, is this something we should be pursuing? Or is this something we can just make a minor adjustment to? But not going in with a decision in my mind already, I think is important to make everybody heard in the situation. Kind of touch on that, at Sonoma Dog Park, I'm there every day. I live four houses from it. I take my two dogs, they, they need it. But I hear a lot of people coming from all parts of not only Carson City, but Dayton and beyond to this one park. So would another park help alleviate some of the traffic there? Possibly. But I think weighing all the sides from every perspective is important. And as a park commissioner, it's my job to put myself into those shoes and the city's shoes and kind of see which ground to recommend.
Thank you.
Supervisor Horton.
Good morning.
Morning.
What do you believe the role of the Parks and Rec Commissioner is in Carson City?
I believe the role of a Parks Commissioner is to be an ambassador to the, to the city and to the people who live here. I moved here three years ago. I grew up in Kings Beach. I was very active up there and never considered Carson City a place to live, raise a family, any of that. The more time I spend here, the more I love it. I went to a commission meeting in December and I forget the lady's name, but she was talking about Lone Mountain Cemetery. And that just got my brain firing, like I'm going to be in a little bin. She brought all the slideshow and all these things. But it's, it's really trying to be an ambassador to show the public what facilities and resources they have access to. And in turn, I feel like people would want to get involved in certain things, especially whatever their interests are. We all have different interests. For one, I'm a disc golfer and a skier. But I have dogs, I like hiking, I mountain bike, I do all sorts of things. So being aware of what we have, how we can do it, and just getting people out doing those things is vital.
What's your favorite park in Hawaii?
Well, I love Sonoma Park because it keeps my dogs from going crazy. But I, I really enjoy the disc golf course, the Carson Ridge. I'm currently working on, with a group of volunteers, trying to make an event happen to benefit the movers and doers adaptive recreation program as a fundraiser to get funds and just again, be an ambassador to the sport, the facility and the, the public. So I'd say the disc golf course. I'm also interested in the archery range.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey.
Hello, and thanks for applying. Well, your answer, the leads right into my question, so I guess you can build on that. So what is your philosophy regarding providing recreational access to user groups of varying ages, skill sets, interests, abilities, that kind of thing?
Oh, yeah. So a little bit of my background, I grew up in Tahoe. I worked for the PUD. I shoveled all the pathways at the parks, cleaned the bathrooms. I, I did that seasonal work. I moved to San Francisco where we started a skateboarding program because all the facilities were like, you can't skateboard here. And it became a really combative problem. And then the city decided, well, let's see what we can do. So we created a program where we bought fold-up ramps and an old beater city van and went to different parks. And we sold out all the time. We ended up getting, I believe it was a half a million dollar grant from Coca-Cola, which got the attention of the mayor of San Francisco. And it was a huge party and, and event. My wife ran the movers and doers program here. And while our time here was, was short, there was a, a huge need. And we took that group up to the disc golf course, the little pitch and putt Pony Express. And just seeing the light on these people's faces when a frisbee would fly and turn or hit the chains, that sparks the excitement I had when I got into the sport and I still have when I play. So I want to help share that experience with everybody. Ability, age, all that, I think is just a mindset. You can get outside, fresh air helps a lot. A little goes a long way, builds up from there. So I think you just got to get out there.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any closing remarks or, or reasons or something that we didn't cover with a question that you'd like to share with us?
Not really that was missed. I feel like you guys have a, a big opportunity and a huge responsibility as Board of Supervisors. But I feel like the role for the Parks Commission, you really need an ambassador. you really need an ambassador and a partner who can work on both sides. I've only lived in Carson for three years and one of the biggest straws for me to throw my name in the hat is to, to learn as much as I can about Carson City, about the trails. When people come to visit, I want to give them that unique, come to this spot, this is where the mill used to be and kind of take them back in time. On my time at the North Tahoe Public Utility Commission, well, their Parks Commission, I was the vice chair for two years. In that time, we did a vetting process to get a ropes course put in. We had to review probably a dozen packets, financials, very in-depth specifics, and meet with these contractors. And we had to work within the parks because it went right over the disc golf course and existing facilities. So the plant, the contractors and the owners of the ropes courses weren't aware of all the facilities around the spot that they're using. So we worked together to kind of tweak the design and it still works for everybody. So community collaboration and independent leadership, I think, helped. It's a good mix. So.
Great. Well, we really want to thank you for applying. You're welcome to stay and listen to the other interviews because at the conclusion, we will select the two candidates.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Assume you're Douglas McKeller?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think you've been through the process before, so I'll give you just a little bit of background. Generally speaking, we'll ask you a series of questions, an interview that is consistent with same questions we asked all the other candidates. And then you can either make an opening remark or a closing remark, your choice. And then you can stay in the audience and listen to the remainder of the interviews because at the conclusion of these, we will be selecting the two candidates to fill the position this morning. So would you like an opening statement or a closing after we've asked you questions and you can fill in any gaps?
Let's try it after.
After? All right.
So you are going to make the decision today?
We are. At the conclusion of the interview, we'll make it. So why don't you tell me what role you think parks play in the community?
Well, I think it plays an extremely important role. I believe that the, it provides an area for communities to come together to enjoy their community and participate in their sports activities or, you know, neighborhood parks provide areas for the local community to come together and outside people to come into those areas. So that it provides an opportunity for, for community, basically. I think that parks is a very important part of what is out there.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
Douglas, you were in the audience this morning. You heard some of the comments about one park in particular. And just in general, how will you evaluate differing opinions and desires when it comes to park programming, when you need to reach a decision?
The... I think that it's important to consider all viewpoints. But sometimes the, it's necessary to go ahead and do what is, what is in my opinion, would be the, the best route to take, taking into consideration all points of view. Whether it be, you know, from the political groups, group of the, of it, or a citizens' commentary. I know there's a lot of comments about dog parks. It sounded like there's a big dog park project coming up. And the, I, I think that, that the people that will be using the dog park, are their, their positions are important as well as the position of the local neighborhood. The local, you know, I understand the reason that you may not want to have a dog park dedicated, taking away from an existing park. But sometimes you gotta, you evaluate what the, what the community wants and you have to make a decision based on what is after consideration of all parties, which direction you want to go.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Horton.
Good morning. What do you believe the role of the Parks and Rec Commissioner is in Carson City?
Advisory and to take in, to take the, to evaluate the, what has, what proposals there are out there, what is going on, what parks, facilities are available. And to advise the parks and the board as to what we feel would be the best use of the funds that are available and what would provide the best opportunities to the local communities for what they, what they want to accomplish.
Thank you. What's your favorite park in Hawaii?
Favorite park that I've been to so far has been the Carriage Park. I enjoy walking. I, I had a major surgery about a year ago and a big part of my rehab is going out and walking for an hour a day. And when I go to the, I go to that one out there, the Carriage, or I go to the railway track. I didn't realize until just recently that that is an actual, that appears to be an actual park area. And I walk that quite a bit. So those are probably my two favorite places that I go to.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shute.
Hello.
Hello.
What is your philosophy in providing recreational activities and access to user groups of varying skills, ages, ability levels, that kind of thing?
What is, what is my?
Philosophy regarding recreational access? And you kind of spoke to it a little bit just now.
Well, the, obviously it's very important. I think that, you know, different ages and different, different abilities are a big part of it. One of the things that I have noticed, I was a building inspector in Sacramento County. I was, I'm a disabled access inspector. And one of the things that I realized that there's a lot of, a lot of areas in the parks that I have been in that don't meet current ADA requirements. And that is something that I think needs, that should be addressed. Although I realize the, as, you know, I manage, I manage construction projects for government agencies. And I understand the cost of doing something like that can be extreme. We've, you know, I, you know, different age groups, different abilities, you need to find a way to accommodate each group of people that are out there. The... I think from what I've, from the time that I've been here, I've, one of the things that I've observed is that there's a fairly large elderly population. I'm part, I'm part of it that here in Carson City. And one of the things that needs to be done is to accommodate what is necessary for them. The recreational facilities that, that are out there. It's difficult to just do something for a small group, for a specific group. But when you do which, when you do just make decisions, you have to take into consideration everybody. And I believe that the, it is important to look at the, anything that we're doing that's in a manner that'll accommodate all age groups, all abilities, all, it's, this is a difficult line to draw, you know? I understand that, but I think that it's important to consider everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. And so would you like any closing remarks?
Yeah, I, I worked for Sacramento County as a construction manager for over 20 years. And in that time, I was involved in the building of parks, two different parks, including two dog parks, one of which is the largest dog park west of the Mississippi, I was told, right at the animal control facility. I managed the construction projects. I dealt with the budgets. I dealt with all the, everything that's involved in, in any kind of a construction project. And I think my background in the, in construction and in, involved in actually building parks and doing, remodeling the activities. I remodeled a large activity center. We built restroom facilities at existing parks. We, you know, upgraded things. And I think my background in that area, those areas are probably beneficial and I can bring a unique view to the Parks Commission.
Wonderful. Thank you again so much for applying. We really appreciate it. And again, you're welcome to stay in the audience and listen to the, we have two more interviews to do and then we'll make our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Diane. Good morning Diane. So I think you've probably heard or been through and stuff on the process before, but I'll give you just a little bit. We will ask you a series of questions to help us determine which candidates to select. You can make either an opening remark or a closing remark after we've asked the questions in case there's something you feel that's important for us to know about you. So it's your choice whether you want an opening or a closing. Or jump in with the questions?
Um, well, just, you know, the reason I applied for this is just to, you know, get more involved in the community. And I think with the commission, you know, I'd like to hear, you know, of course, other people's voices in the community and just see more what's happening.
Okay, so I'll start. So my question is, what role do you think parks plays in the community?
Well, as far as I know, I was on the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Rec. So I learned there. But I don't think it's just parks. I think it's, you know, to get all of our community, you know, obviously hard to make everybody happy, but, you know, there's different organizations that want everything. And I think, you know, the Parks, if we didn't have that commission, I can't imagine Carson City without it. But, you know, you have caring people like you that, you know, you're the supervisors or commerce or, you know, and I think we need, you know, people that care about this community. And, you know, the Parks and Rec, I think it's more expanded than just, you know, city parks or the recreation building. You know, it's more than that.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
Diane, or maybe your past teacher thing forces me to call you Ms. Roberts, so.
You can call me by my first name.
This morning, you know, there are differing opinions often on how a park will be used or programmed or changed. As a Parks and Rec Commissioner, how will you evaluate the differing opinions and desires of the citizens to reach a decision on stuff that comes before you?
I think you have to, you know, listen to those people. Of course, they're concerned and parks. Actually, within the last five years, growing up here, I didn't even know we had as many parks as we do in Carson City. I grew up across from Sunset Park, but it was a dirt field then. But I think you have to listen to everything, but you're always going to have people that disagree with any organization on something. But I think you have to look at what's best for the majority of our community. You know, and who's, who's going to use this facility or the building or the park. You know, sure, you don't want to build a park that nobody's going to use, but I think, and they can't all be in the south of Carson or, you know, you need to spread them out. Like is, the talk now about the Ron Wilson Park.
Thank you.
Supervisor Horton.
Good morning, Coach Diane. How are you?
Okay, so the tennis came out and the, and the teacher part came out.
What's the role of the Parks and Rec Commissioner in Carson City?
Unfortunately, I probably haven't studied that as I should have. But I believe they're a group that reports to you about their concerns and they cover this agenda, but keep, keep you on track of, you know, everything that's going on and just supporting supervisors and the commissions, I would say.
Thank you. What's your favorite park in Hawaii?
What's my favorite park? Actually, probably Mills Park. I'm looking forward to what's happening there. But, you know, I, I was there at eight years old learning to play tennis. So it was real close to Baker Electric, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shute.
Hello there.
Hi.
What is your philosophy in providing recreational access to user groups of varying skills, ages, interests, and needs?
Can you repeat that one more time?
So your philosophy regarding recreational access to different user groups? So whether it's age or skill, need level, abilities? So how can?
I think this is my experience with the schools. And a lot of people don't know this, but, you know, our school gymnasiums are shared by the city because there obviously aren't enough for all the great activities in Carson City. And I think that needs to still be available. And, you know, different group, I think we need to look at our handicap disabled citizens that are interested in, you know, using parks or what it might be. You know, we, we weren't ADA at Carson High School. There was some unavailable ways to get to some of the fields, which wasn't even addressed and could have been, you know, very difficult thing for the district. But I think we need to, you know, include and listen to all those groups that, you know, your seniors, you know, sure, there's a senior center, but, you know, you want, if they want some other activities and just to support, there's numerous groups. And, you know, I just think some youth programs here in Carson City, you know, they used to be huge and I know they're smaller now. I don't know a whole lot about the football and all, but I think soccer has dwindled and then it grows. You know, it's a huge, huge sport. Then there's, you know, and I know the Parks and the Rec do as much as they can on, you know, offering summer classes and groups and all. But, you know, I think we, maybe the commission needs to let the community know that we want to, you know, go out there and vary and we're interested in all citizens and all members in Carson City, you know, not just the ones that are sports people.
Thank you.
Okay, well Diane, again, we want to thank you so very much for applying for this position. We have one more interview to, to complete this morning and then we'll be making our decision. So you're welcome to stay in the audience if you would like.
I can stay here? Oh, thank you.
Good morning Pamela. Nope, you're on. There you go. Everybody left it on for green. Good morning Pamela. We want to, thank you so much for applying for this position. We're going to ask you a series of questions to help us make the decision. Um, we're gonna ask you a series of questions to help us make the decision. You are the last candidate, so upon the conclusion of your interview, the board will make a decision on who's going to be selected for the positions. You're welcome to make an opening comment or a closing one after we've asked, asked you the questions, your preference.
All righty, well, I'll go ahead and make an opening comment. Thank you for having me here today. Um, it's a great opportunity. I would like to say that I have lived here for almost six years. I found Carson City to be an amazing place to live, and one of the reasons is that the parks are beautiful, well-maintained, and, um, also the trail system, which I visit regularly with one of my dogs, is quite exciting. I can say to you also that I am an advocate of shade in parks, and I think that opportunities need to be considered to have shade areas through either trees or structures. I also visit a dog park regularly, both with dogs off-leash and on, and I find that the two daily visits to Sonoma Park are a very important part of my life. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll start off. Um, what role do you think parks plays in the community?
So parks play an important role for recreation, and recreation could be as simple as sitting, could be a walking recreation. Um, they provide beauty, uh, they also provide, um, spaces for animals, squirrels like to live in parks, um, birds find parks pleasant, so they help to provide really a, uh, an aesthetic as well as a recreational, uh, purpose in people's lives.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi.
Pamela, you, um, you heard this morning some differing opinions on, on parks and how they're used and programmed, and, um, I, I, I'm wondering as a commissioner how you will balance those differing opinions on, on how a park is used or programmed or built, um, between the various opinions and desires of the community when you have to reach a decision.
So I think it's important to listen to members of the community, uh, people who come to speak in front of the Board of Supervisors, but there's also listening through the surveys that come out. Um, I've participated in several surveys through the city that have to do with parks and recreation. Um, I think the balance comes from listening to all voices and not necessarily just the loudest voices. Parks are for people who live in all areas of the city, um, but I also think that when a survey comes out, a decision can sometimes be made that, um, is not taking into consideration the users or the residents. For example, I'll say with Fuji Park, and I don't know if this is true or not, there was a push to have grass at Fuji Park, and I heard that grass, uh, was not really going to work there because there might be runoff into the, the stream. So there was discussion about moving Fuji Park, Dog Park, from where it was located up near the street, which would eliminate shade, eliminate really the peacefulness of the, of the place. And, um, I was wondering when I heard that, and I don't know if it's true or not, if then anyone thought about how, even though people wanted grass, did they necessarily want to move in order to get the grass? So the, the balance comes from, you know, listening and then considering really all options and maybe things that hadn't been thought of.
Supervisor Horton.
Good morning. What do you believe the role of a Parks and Recs Commissioner is in Carson City?
So the, um, role that I see from reading past minutes is to, uh, take into consideration what the city department wants to do and then have a voice for the, the people of the city as well. I was, uh, I was a member of city council in the city that I lived in previously, and there were times when, um, uh, the, the city departments would try to push an agenda rather than necessarily the, the counselors or the citizens would try to push. So I feel that it's to be a voice of the, um, the, the city residents, not just the, the city department itself.
What's your favorite park and why?
So, um, my favorite park is not a park necessarily, it's the, it's the trail system up near the Korean War Veterans Park. My favorite park per se is, um, Sonoma Park, and that is because it is a recreational area for my dogs and for people as well. It's really a people's park with dogs as the activity, but the, the trail system out there at the, uh, the Korean War Veterans Park is, is an amazing area.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shutey.
Hello.
Hi.
What is your philosophy regarding recreational access to differing user groups, so varying ages, skill sets, interests, needs, that kind of thing?
Um, I think it's important to have opportunities for all ages and all groups as well. Um, I believe I read the other day about a ranger-led activity at Long Branch Park, and it had the, um, was going to be a walk, but there was also the opportunity for someone with, uh, the need to reserve a, an all-terrain, I don't know if it's a, it's a wheelchair-type thing or something, but I thought that was really cool, that there was the opportunity for someone who maybe couldn't walk long distances to still take advantage of the, of the program. Um, I, I've noticed in the recreation handbook, the flyer that comes out, that there's good opportunities for children, there's opportunities for seniors, there's things for people who, uh, like myself, are not necessarily sporty or, um, coordinated. I'm not a coordinated person. Um, there are things for us to do as well. So there's a, my philosophy would be that you should include a wide range of opportunities for, um, all ages of people and all skill levels in your recreation programs. Thank you.
Okay, well, again, we wanna thank you so very much for applying for this position, and, uh, again, you're welcome to stay, 'cause we're gonna discuss it up here to decide.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we're at the tough part here. We certainly had wonderful candidates to, uh, select from. I think the city would be well-served by any of the candidates, so I wanna thank you all sincerely for your, um, applications. It's kinda wonderful to find out all this talent in our community. So we now have the tough decision of, uh, selecting two candidates. Does anyone want to, uh, take the first stab at that? Okay, Curtis.
Thank you all for applying. We greatly appreciate it. I think from my perspective, I really appreciated Jacob's honesty and dedication to the community and his commitment to wanting to do things for the people. So I would, I would definitely, uh, select him as one of my candidates. My second one would be, uh, Diane Baker-Roberts. The reason is she was born and raised here in this community and has a, a long and story, uh, history within our community in dealing with the youth and other programs, and I think her knowledge and skills would serve the commission well.
Thank you. Supervisor White.
Thank you, and indeed, uh, some really good candidates today. For me, I would agree with, uh... Wow. Curtis.
What's his name?
Maybe I should have played less football when I was in high school. Wow. Uh, I would agree with, with Curtis that Jacob brings, you know, some experience in the realm, and for me, what really jumped off today was enthusiasm and energy. I, I really see that in Jacob, and, and I think we need some of that. For me, uh, my second but equal, not really second, but, uh, Pamela, because of her, uh, extensive experience in city functions, um, and the ability to understand the long-term commitment that it takes from the city to provide the parks and facilities that we need.
Okay. Supervisor Giomi.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna jump on the Jacob bandwagon. I, I, I just wanna add, Jacob, that I, I really felt your passion, um, and I think that, um, really spoke to me. I, I, I love the comment about becoming an ambassador for our parks, uh, because I, I think that's, uh, a noble goal to shoot for. The, the other opening, um, I'm, I'm torn, um, between Pamela and, uh, Ms. Coach Roberts. You know, we, we, at this board have tried to, to strike a balance between sort of, um, don't take offense, Ms. Roberts, new blood and old blood, um, when we appoint people to board, so that you have some folks who have some history and some new folks who, like Jacob, are relatively new to the community. So I, I think for that reason and because, um, we talk a lot at both open space and parks about the physicality of, of the parks and open space, I think sometimes we miss the recreation and activity component, and, um, Diane is a former coach, um, of a lot of sports, gets that recreation and activity component, so I guess that, that is where, um, I put my second vote.
Thank you. Well, that leaves us, uh, well, we're irrelevant, Lisa, on the first choice. We have three votes already for Jacob. Do you have a, uh, second candidate you would like to, uh, discuss? It's tough choices, 'cause they all brought something wonderful to the table.
This is really tough, and I'll tell you why. My conflict is, um, Coach Baker, or Mrs. Baker and Diane, and, you know, that, that background and, and Supervisor Giomi brought, or said very well that, that, that team sport aspect, the coaching, the, the athletics, the, um, working within the facilities, speaking in terms of knowledge base regarding, um, using of gyms and the school gyms and, and having that institutional knowledge of, of, um, recreation within the city and how we're, we're incorporating and, and collaborating with, uh, school district, that kind of thing, which is critical. Uh, and then Pamela, the background knowledge and in terms of, um, or, or, uh, knowledge within, uh, a city and, um, the, that recreation and Parks and Rec really should include everybody and talking about the adaptive equipment and, um, the open space versus Parks and Rec. And so, um, I'm uneven footing there, so I'm, I really am struggling with that.
Oh, shh! Oh, thank you. I appreciate your help, Stacy. Yeah. Yeah, every day.
It's a really tough decision. Um, it's a really tough decision.
Well, then, then we'll talk about it.
Okay, let's talk.
Let's talk about it a little bit. So when I look at all of these candidates, I try to determine who currently sits on our Park and Rec Commission, and I, and I try to find balance, right? Because I think that's what we're all after here, is to, to make sure each voice in the community is represented. So even when I look here at this board, right, we each come from different wards except for me, but the objective is to make sure all voices have an opportunity to be heard so that you get well-rounded decisions, right? And I think, I heard some of you, and I really appreciated that you understand there's, there's no hundred percent win in any decision. That just doesn't exist, right? And so by having a balanced commission, though, I hope that we get the best possible outcome for the decision. And so then I look at the applicants, and so I looked at, uh, Michael. He brings, um, landscaping and architecture, right? So he, he brings a design element to, to the board, and so do we need, is that a need that is not fulfilled or that staff is not fulfilling? And so that's kinda how I'm looking at this decision, is which ones filling a void or a need on the commission as a whole. I concur with Jacob. I think that, um, bringing someone that's doing multiple activities within the park system, not just one, I think he brings that varied voice, right? 'Cause he's gonna look at it from all aspects, I hope, or that's, that's what I see, so I think we all agreed that Jacob brings that to the commission. Douglas, I thought that what he brings is, um, knowledge, having done park construction and, uh, design work similar to what we get with Michael, right? Those two bring me the same two elements that we would potentially need or could use. And then I think Diane brings us the history. She has a knowledge base. She's been here a long time, so I think that she brings that to the parks for us not to forget, I always like to say this, about where we've been, because sometimes you need that. Where have we been? You need grounding, right? So I think that part of the thing that I look at is I'll see a Jacob that says, "Let's go! We're gonna get this," and that enthusiasm that we all want, but potentially Diane is on the other side saying, "Well, is that the best use of the limited resources that we have? In which thing do we pick?" I think for me, then Pamela is right in the center of them all, right? So I thought she brought maybe a voice that is, um, mixed. I think maybe she's, or centered. I, I just see her as the center, potentially being able to say yea or nay, just, I don't know. So I think I'm leaning, uh, Pamela, just because I think she brings, I'm looking for the voices and who currently sits, and so what voice would she bring, what voice would Diane, who I adore, so this, like, really is hard on me too. So I, I think the voice that we need right now is Pamela. And so sometimes I just look at, what do we need right now, today? Doesn't mean that they're not the right, other people aren't the right candidates. So that's... Did that help you or hurt you?
Well, you know what? Actually, it, it, it really does help, and I think you articulated very well the different needs, the different voids, um, the direction, um... I, something though, um, I believe though, or that, that, the side of things where actually the, the organized sports, I think that is a void. I think that is a void that we have in terms of, not, no, I don't think the city, there's a void in the city with organized sports. I think the perspective from the Parks and Rec Board in terms of, of looking at youth sports and how some of our youth sports fit into, um, the, the plan. I think that that's a really important voice, and, um, so, actually, while I was leaning... I think that that's a really important voice and so actually while I was leaning toward both for different reasons, I actually, I think regarding the background with the coaching and, and I think I'm in a, just barely, I think Diane will be
Go, I'll do the good job.
The third voice. Where Pamela, you can see my, has my stress with this. I just so appreciate your overview and your, that big picture thinking and my hope is you stay involved with this because I, it is such, so important what you're bringing to the table, especially with, you know, the different users within the system and within the trail system specifically. I honestly, all applicants, you, what you said, Mayor, was, you summarized it beautifully in terms of, you know, the focus on landscape design and the importance of that and that is so, so critical. And then your background knowledge in terms of actually creating parks. And so we're just so lucky in all of our applicants, which that's great and it's awful all at once because it makes it super difficult. But yes, I, I think to fill in that void, I would go with Mrs. Roberts and I know I'm just, I know you asked Baker, but.
So I just wanted to add on to the record on behalf of Douglas and Michael, that Mr. Cron sits on that Park and Rec and stuff or planning. And so we have roles that can be filled by others and so I wanted you to know, though, how important and your perspectives matter, right? So please don't, please don't take it that you weren't appointed, that we don't think you have talents that you could bring to the system. I just wanted, and to say the same thing that Ms. Schute did is to please stay involved, right? Because openings happen a lot and so you really bring a wealth, all of you, to the table. And so just again, thank you. So it looks like I'm ready for a motion for Jacob McDermid and Diane Baker-Roberts, just moved.
Four-year.
Okay. So I move to appoint Jacob McDermid and Diane Baker-Roberts, each for a four-year term ending on January 1, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect it was unanimous. We're gonna take a brief recess and we'll come back in five, five minutes. Okay, so we're in recess. We're gonna bring the Board of Supervisors back to order. Just to let the board know, we will have a closed meeting to confer with council and that will be at the conclusion of the Board of Health, just so that you know. We're now on final public comment. Okay, seeing none, then we are adjourned as the Board of Supervisors and just so people is, are aware, Dr. Lyons could not make it today and Sheriff Furlong is also excused for the Board of Health, so today up, oh, I have, oh, I have to give him a gavel. This is dangerous, you guys.
Now you're in trouble.
Yeah, now you're in trouble, so.
Call to order the Carson City Board of Health. Ms. Warren, would you please call the roll?
Chair Lyons. Chair Lyons. Vice Chair Giomi.
Here.
Member Bagwell.
Here.
Member Furlong. Member Horton.
Here.
Member Schute.
Here.
Member White.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Right. Item 18 is a public comment. This is a public comment for any item that is in the purview of the Board of Health. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 19, which is approval of our meeting minutes for the December 21, 2023 meeting.
I move approval of the minutes of December 21, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You'll clear the board for me. Next item is the discussion on possible action regarding the proposed acceptance of a report from the Carson City Health Officer, Dr. Colleen Lyons. And as you mentioned, she's under the weather, we wish her well, but she provided a written report and I would accept a motion to accept that report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Item 21 is a discussion and possible action regarding the proposed acceptance of the report from the Carson City Health and Human Services Director, Ms. Aker.
Twenty C.
Please.
Twenty-one.
What did I say?
Twenty-one.
Twenty B.
B's and boy, okay.
Twenty B.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I don't.
Good morning. For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. You all received in your packets and the public can access it online, my comprehensive report that has a lot of information in it. I'll just also say that that report also goes to the State Board of Health. It's amended just a little bit, but we're required to report up to the State Board of Health and that happened on March 1st. So as part of my report, I have requests to the Board of Health and just some things that I want to highlight and report on. On October 19th, the Board of Supervisors accepted some grants that came through the state from the CDC and we have been able to hire positions, so I wanted to update the Board of Health on that. With those grants, we have hired our chronic disease prevention and health promotion division manager. That was an internal hire, so she got promoted. She originally worked in the tobacco program and that's Suzie Rubio. We hired an assessment and accreditation coordinator, Jordan, and she started on February 23rd. We now have a data analyst, John, that started on February 9th and he will help with data throughout the entire department. As you know, we're highly grant-funded, so that presents some problems when we need data or activities done throughout the department. So I'm very happy to have some of these positions on board that can help us throughout the department. Also, very happy to report and is a godsend, the Deputy Director and myself is administrative assistant and she started December 1st. I have never had a administrative assistant, so it's some learning on my part of what to pass off, but getting the hang of it. Also, we have a public health communication specialist, Dane, that started on January 12th. So he will help us with communicating out to the public, which was one of the areas that we thought that we needed to improve upon. So thank you very much to the Board of Supervisors for accepting those grants. I also want you to know that there is a vacation that's taking part at the federal level for continuing these types of funds. These funds have been dispersed from the CDC for all of the U.S. and by doing that, we're trying to build our infrastructure for public health, so it's important that these funds continue in some capacity. Next, I'm gonna talk about our Community Health Improvement Plan. You'll hear a little bit more about that as one of the different agenda items, but we're starting that process. We do have a contractor that's working with us and we are gonna be asking for you all to be involved with that. It will guide activities to improve the health of our community and these are activities that's community-wide, not just Carson City Health and Human Services. And as some of those activities come about, we're looking at the SB 118 money that was given to health departments across the state and the state to provide services to improve the public health within Nevada. So, and hot off the press on that one, we did get notification this week from the state to submit what we're going to be using that money for. Luckily, we have got our Community Health Needs Assessment in place. We have already looked internally, what we can take from that and what funds can be used for. We just need to report to them real broadly of what we're gonna be using the money for. So that will be forthcoming. And we've got still some hard-to-hire positions, the Clinical Services Division Manager, which must be an RN, looking at some different avenues in which to advertise for that. We do have some really good staff that we hired for our Environmental Health Specialists. We wanted to at least get a Environmental Health Specialist II in there that has experience, however, did not have those applicants. We hired some really good individuals that will be training. They are classified as an EH Specialist I at this point, but we will have a good team going forward.
Nikki, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the Clinical Services Division Manager? Just in my experience, in my employment, when we have registered nurse positions open, we're drawing a lot of applicants because there are a lot of nurses who are ready to lead bedside nursing. And so I'm just curious, why do you think you're having a hard time recruiting for that position?
I think, because it's
Experience, the kind of experience you need?
That and it's a manager position.
Okay.
And to be very honest, this goes right in line with the conversation that we were having at last week at the retreat. It's pay.
Okay.
As well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a new item I put on my report are future Board of Health items. So I want from you all, as a board member, if you want more information, definitely to reach out and we'll get them put on the agendas. What's planned coming up at this point is we'll have our 2024 County Health Rankings and as you remember, Mr. John Packham was here and he presented last year, so I'm gonna have him back. And he said that we can have Carson City-specific data, so I have asked for that as well. And my plan is for June to have that. We have our Street Outreach Project that, that contract is in force now and the program has started, so we're gonna have an update on that. That will be also in June. And then also our Carson City Housing Plan Updates in June. As you can see, we may have a busy June. And then the acceptance of the Community Health Improvement Plan, which will be June or September. And then we'll also have our Carson City Health and Human Services Strategic Plan. That is the progression of what happens with our Community Health Needs Assessment. Then we work on the Community Health Improvement Plan and then after that comes the Strategic Plan for CCHHS. That is the piece of what we can tackle. There's many other things in the Improvement Plan that our community partners can tackle, but our partners can tackle, but our Strategic Plan will address those that we can tackle. And with that, I ask if you have any other items.
Any input from the board on items that Nikki should consider in the future? Nikki, in the, one of the things that I'm interested in, and maybe you'll cover it under Street Outreach, is sort of the integration between our NGO partners, our community nonprofits, and how we're, how, probably the ways in which we're interfacing with them and the benefits that they're providing. Because I think oftentimes, we grant them funds and they give us reports, but it's nice to hear from city staff how that, you know, I don't think it needs to be anything extensive. It's just good to hear how those partnerships are working from our perspective.
Perfect. We will add that.
So I think that's a good item to add as well.
And, you know, to build on that, I would love to view the collaborative efforts and really not only how the partnerships are working, but what the different nonprofits are doing to perhaps supplement or to enhance your services and vice versa. That would be awesome. Thanks.
Any other comments from the board? All right.
And I'll just say, if you think of...
I'll get to public comment.
If you think of something, and, you know, and it's not at this meeting or whatever, reach out, and we will get it on the agenda.
Is that the end of this item for you?
No. I'm going to also give you some highlights. So this picture is what we were able to do with our clinic front desk. It mirrors what it looks like at our main front desk at the Health Department. We have improved that both for staff safety and to make it look a little more appealing. And if you can see a little bit in the background, you can see the gray doors. We, those were pink, and we've been able to paint some of our doors gray. We get really excited about little things like changing the color of our pink doors. So, so we've been able to do some of that, and we still have pink doors at the Health Department, but we're working to change that.
But less, less of them now.
Less of them. Very, very happy about that. One thing I wanted to bring to your all attention and let you know what we are working on. We have noticed that our family planning patients and the number of visits have been on a steady decline. We're also noticing that with the vaccines, and I'll show you that graph here in a minute. So this is something that management and clinic staff are looking at and trying to figure out, you know, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, where did those patients go? Is it because they now have health insurance, and they're going elsewhere, or exactly what is happening? So, and as we work through this, it may, more than likely, will turn into a quality improvement project. So just wanted to let you all know that we're aware of this, we're looking into it, and we'll be researching further.
Maybe it's a success story. Perhaps these people have heard the education and don't need so much family planning.
Maybe, but we're going to look into it.
Member Bagwell.
Are you seeing any other indicators? So while this one is declining, are you seeing an impact in another indicator that's rising? Right? So I don't know that I'm concerned if you're not having the visits, as long as I'm not seeing a detrimental reverse, right? And so I guess I'd like to see that in the combination, because I don't know that you're going to guess that it's insurance, but as long as I don't see a corresponding escalation. So I'm interested, are you seeing it in our other statistics? Because when I looked at your year-end report, I'm not seeing a trend the other direction.
Well, and the year-end, we'll just report on twenty twenty-three, so you're not getting that...
Comparison to twenty.
Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. We'll be looking at all of that. I would be curious, you know, are, are family planning visits are declining, but are our partners, are they increasing? So are they going to, like, other doctors in the area? Are they going to a federally qualified house center?
And what you wouldn't know is that, but you could ask. But the other thing is the opposite, in my mind of this, is maybe an increase in the number of pregnancies, and you wouldn't know that. I mean, you wouldn't, you don't have that information necessarily, you know? So it might not be possible to get the other side of this particular coin.
And once we also look at, of course, you know, the data that we'll get from the County Health Rankings won't be as current as what we are, but are we seeing something? So it's looking at, trying to look at the entire picture, and that's what we will be doing. And then here's where I talked about the vaccines as well. What we do know, and we know this because we've got a nurse that goes out and does Vaccine for Children audits for other providers that provide those vaccines, we do know that they're seeing a decline as well. So, so again, we'll be looking at both of these. I wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that we've noticed this and we are looking into it. So some other highlights, we have an Environmental Health Division Manager that's been hired. She starts tomorrow. We're very excited to have her come on board. She's from out of the area but has extensive experience. So very excited for her coming on board. Also, Nevada is ranked fifth in the nation for primary and secondary syphilis and ninth for the congenital syphilis issues. We've talked about this previously at the Board of Health, and Nevada has developed a statewide multidisciplinary team to address the issues, and we are a part of that team. So, so looking at it as Nevada as a whole. The Carson City Housing Plan, as we reported, it's been implemented. And within the three phases, in the Survive Phase, we've had twenty individuals that have been assisted. The Stabilize Phase, we've had twelve that have been rehoused. And in our Thrive, we've had thirty-nine that have been rehoused or assisted with security deposits. So that's, we've made good progress on that. In twenty twenty-three, Human Services had the goal of twenty-three individuals rehoused in twenty twenty-three. While that goal was surpassed, and overall, with all the programs, we've had eighty-four individuals that have been rehoused.
Can we just pause for a second, maybe, and reflect on how big a deal that is? You know, we have, we have a lot of discussions at both the Board of Health and at the Board of Supervisors about spending ARPA funds on our unhoused individuals, on our program to keep people housed who may be on the border of losing that housing, and to, in the first year that the program is fully implemented, nearly triple the goal is quite an accomplishment. So I don't think we should just let that pass with a line on a slide. So kudos to you and the whole city. Kudos to our partners, because every community in the U.S. is struggling with the unhoused, every single community. And, you know, there's no right answer for any community. There's no one shoe-fits-all solution. We have had a fair amount of criticism, frankly, about our program. And so I'm very happy to see that we are at least initially successful. Not that we're going to rest on our laurels. We're going to continue to evaluate, but really, let's celebrate what we have been able to accomplish while we continue to work on what still needs to be done.
And thank you for that.
May I?
Please.
So I just wanted to comment a little bit on something else, too, that part of the success story here is also, in case you didn't know, on the April IFC meeting for the State Vitality Center may get a three-million-dollar grant to be able to do the move. And then, obviously, we had the five hundred thousand in ARPA, as you were saying, to meet that goal, to serve our public with beds. And so I'm super excited that I see our whole plan maybe coming to fruition and that it's actually accomplishing the goals that we all set out. And then the other question I have is, when will we have the point-in-time count results? When will that come before us? I didn't do that earlier on the presentation slide, but when will we see that?
So the official report, it may be this month or April. She's not here. They need to, they take all of the numbers and vet them and make sure there's not duplicates.
So maybe our June meeting?
If we, we should have it by June, and we will bring that up as well.
Because I'm really interested in looking at, are we hitting the numbers? Are we making a difference? Are we stemming the tide or just holding our own, I guess, right? Because when I see your statistics that say, oh, we helped twenty people, seventeen, twelve rehoused, I hope that that's reflected in the point-in-time count, right? That we don't see that getting worse.
Well, I think we have to keep in mind that the point-in-time count is one, is one measure. And I don't know that it's, quite frankly, I don't know that it's the best measure. I, you know, I, I don't want us to be too disappointed if that, because the last number we counted, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was sixty-nine or seventy strikes.
Sixty-eight or sixty-nine.
Okay, so I mean, you know, that was, I don't know. I feel like that was a low number. So if this year the numbers go up, I don't know that that necessarily means that we're failing. I think it just is a reflection of the intricacies or the difficulties in doing a point-in-time count, you know? But it, like you said, it is a measure, and it's data we need to know.
Yeah, a measure.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Another area that I think is incredibly important to keep in mind is, along with these numbers of people who are now housed or, you know, and have that assistance with down payments, are the increased numbers potentially of employment and the perhaps reduced numbers of needed services? And so while that's not part of this report per se, it's that ripple effect that I think is incredibly meaningful. So this is great news. But yes, it's definitely a work in progress.
Absolutely, and it's something that definitely, you know, we're just on the start of it. So excited to see where it can all go. And I think one thing also to bring up is, you know, within our economy today, we're seeing where people are asking for more assistance just because of what, how much housing costs. And so that's something, you know, that can play into this as well.
To build on that, though, then even with more assistance, to put that in context, that it's not more assistance because other areas aren't working, but it's more assistance because of what else is going on regarding costs.
Correct. And somewhat to build on that is our Women, Infants, and Children's Program, WIC.
Nice segue.
So probably, as most of you know, WIC is caught up in the continuing resolution at the federal government. I didn't hear, there may be a vote tonight. Right now, WIC is funded through tomorrow. We are continuing to advocate for WIC. I was up on the Washington D.C. Hill last week talking with our federal legislators about the importance of WIC. And, you know, we've got some support letters from individuals that have been assisted through WIC. We see these individuals within our program. We know how important it is, and we'll continue that advocacy. We, in Douglas County, we are having a meeting tomorrow because we did have our WIC specialists resign from Douglas, that Douglas County position. So we are in touch with the WIC State Grand Tour and Douglas County to figure out how we can support that program or transition that program. So more to come on that, but it is a program that we do need within our community. So if you have the chance to talk with your federal legislators, let them know. They are aware, and the individuals within the offices up there are advocating very hard for this program. And then just point out, as Mayor Bagwell brought it up within her State of the City presentation, our Public Health Preparedness Staff conducted twenty-one public flu vaccination events around the Quad County. Almost eight hundred were vaccinated, with two hundred and eighty-three of those being sixty-five and older, which is one of our vulnerable populations. And this was just their staff that did that, so just one division that did that. And again, I would remind everyone that these are our point-of-distribution events, so they serve as small exercises of getting medication, testing, other supplies out to our public. And these types of events are why we were able to transition very quickly during COVID, and I don't like to say that word anymore, but I will bring it up. But we were able to put those events into place quickly because we've do them on an annual basis, and now even more than an annual basis, and staff are trained, and we still learn something from each one of these. And with that, I'll take any further questions.
All right. Any questions from the board that weren't already answered? Any public comment on this item?
Yes, and thank you, Chair. Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I have several questions because I took more than a five-minute break. I missed a public, I missed the opportunity to have public comment, and I'm sorry for that. Can't make up for that. Right now, I've got a few minutes to talk. And I'd like to, I didn't get in on missing Dr. Lyons not being here today is unfortunate. I had some specific questions related to things that she's been dealing with and as far as this overall package. And then also...
Denny, we're on this one agenda item right now. There'll be public comment overall at the end.
Fine. Good. I appreciate that. So my thing is, you had in your presentation the deal for opportunity to put things on the agenda. I'd like to make some suggestions.
Please do.
Thank you very much. I have been speaking about and bringing up every opportunity I can be redundant at, just trying to find new ways. Artificial turf, please put it on your agenda to do look at. I'd also like you to consider the fact that the national suggestion is that seniors are dealing with a higher portion of STDs than they had in the past. Don't know if COVID just shook something up in people. I don't know. But suicide also issue, that's been a big deal, and vaping is on the rises, and also digital addictions that are... that are leading to, I think, truancies and different things like that that are keeping children amused but not educated. And I think that's really a big factor for us. And schools right now finding ways, if you've got to bring high tech into the school and let them indulge at recess on some high-tech games or arcades are such great. But that's a big factor in their not necessarily getting to school as far as what I've been able to find from children. And so those are the things that I would like to have considered on the agendas. Thank you very much.
Some of those are certainly within our purview and some are not, but the ones that are will, will be great if you could. Is there any other board comments? Any other public comments? All right, I'll take a motion, Member White. Is there a second? Second, did you, second Curtis? All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to item number 20C, which is discussion and possible action regarding the proposed acceptance of the 2023 Annual Report of Carson City Health and Human Services. Nikki, you have a very extensive report here. Maybe instead of hitting the whole report, you can hit the highlights for us.
Sure. So I want to address, there's been some questions of, you've got my comprehensive director's report and then this report. So the statistics within my report that are annually and the statistics in the annual report should be the same. If they're not, we've got a disconnect somewhere. The annual report is used to communicate to our community members about the services that we provide and what was provided in 2023. And this document will be available on our website for community members to look at. So those are a little bit of the differences there is throughout the year, I report on the director's report, things taking place within quarters. The last one does bring it all together. I'm not going to go through each page here. I, on.
I do have one question on, I'm sorry, you aren't to that page yet. But it's page, if I had my glasses, I could actually see it, page three.
Page what?
Three.
Okay.
In that third paragraph on the left, it says, it talks about Department of Carson City also provides some services in adjoining counties through state delegation of authority. So I thought our agreements with adjoining counties were an interlocal agreement, not a state delegation.
So we, we have the interlocal agreement, which is with Douglas County for environmental health services. Other services that we provide, such as the public health preparedness, the disease surveillance, those are delegations of authority from the state. And we get granted funds for that.
I knew the funds were granted, I thought it was through an interlocal. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, on page four, down at the bottom, we have what our funding is. New, what we did this year is we broke out the indigent tax funds from the grant funding. In the past, these funds were provided in an overall grant dollar amount or percentage. So because we have been focusing in on that indigent tax here recently, I felt it was important to break those out. Page five, I just want to highlight that both the Adolescent Health and Tobacco Prevention and Control Programs, they focus on youth. And you can see that the two programs combined together have presented to over 1,000 youth. Some of these youth may be duplicated. It would only be a small percentage, but, and I don't have a way to break that out, but just wanted to let you know that we are out there and getting in touch and touching as many youth as we can. The smoking statistics that are presented here are the same as last year. And that's because the Youth Behavioral Health Survey, which we pull these statistics from, is conducted every other year. And moving on to page six, if there's no questions for page five, I want to highlight that CCHHS does take various private insurances. So we are contracted with those insurance companies, although the majority of our patients, as you can see, were uninsured. And clinic staff was able to see and assist 4,019 unduplicated patients, and this is for all services, through 7,107 clinic visits. Most of our sexually transmitted infections diagnosed and treated were chlamydia. And most of those were under the age of 25. The clinic does offer pregnancy testing. And if that test is positive, the healthcare providers, the nurses, i.e. the nurses, do provide counseling and education about establishing medical care, which is very important with an OB-GYN, among the other topics that have been outlined. We do offer a vast array of immunizations and the statistics for the year were provided. Our walk-in no appointment needed day is on Thursdays, so today. And immunizations can be given other days with an appointment. Any questions on? Moving on to page seven, just as I brought up, our Environmental Health does have an interlocal agreement and we provide those services in Douglas County. There is some differences between what we provide in Carson City versus Douglas County, but those are listed on this page. And I've already talked about our staffing. We have great individuals that are going to be trained and out there doing inspections for us. On page eight, the Epidemiology Division is responsible by law to investigate cases, clusters, outbreaks, and suspected cases of reportable diseases. These reportable diseases are listed in Nevada Administrative Code 441A. And there are 79 of those reported diseases. Some are pretty rare, but those, especially if we get any of those, are really important for us to get on quickly. We also provide education to individuals that have contracted a disease or what to look for if they have been exposed. Staff also work closely with area healthcare providers, hospital staff, school nurses, daycare providers, and the state, along with others, to provide data, advice, training, education, and outreach. And if you remember, I'm sure you do, that this division was restructured and we have additional staff. And that was due to lessons that we learned from during COVID. There is now more depth and staff are cross-trained. Also, because of that restructuring within this division, there are now two epidemiologists in addition to the division manager, Dustin Booth. So we're able to provide more information to our partners and along with the community. So for Human Services, those are services provided for Carson City residents. That's mandated by law. Human Services is a community action agency, which we discussed at our indigent tax presentation last week. So that is collecting data, making sure that we bring grant dollars into our community. Ideally, we went all individuals in Carson City seeking resources to come through us so we can do a vulnerability assessment. And that's where we gather some of that information. It's put into the databases statewide. And as I just alluded to, with those statistics that are gathered, it can equate more grant funding with bringing into our community. And those grant funds help with some of our housing assistance, which helps with our housing plan. It all goes together and is one big package. In 2023, we collaborated to provide a job fair and a volunteer fair to the community. The volunteer fair was new. And it was seen after COVID that individuals needed to be connected to those volunteer opportunities. And organizations needed that connection for obtaining volunteers. This was an item that came out of our Carson City Behavioral Task Force and it came to fruition. Page 10, it, this just shows where some of those individuals that we assisted, what program they were assisted with and where that grant funding or assistance came from. Page 11, this is our Public Health Preparedness. So as I brought up earlier, this is the division that keeps us ready and prepared for those disasters, either natural or man-made. And they are the ones that work on those pod exercises for us. At the, this past year, we were able to purchase a new medical, mobile medical facility and the team practiced setting it up at Public Works Corporate Yard. Our partners were able to come and see it being set up, help set up, and being tore down. And there's a picture of it on this page. This is an asset that we will have if we need it in the future. And it's not if, it's when. Page 12, our Quality Improvement Program or QI. That's a core element of our public health accreditation. It's something we should be doing and is also part of the city's strategic plan. Quality improvement is important in everything we do and we certainly use that as we see different things happening. Like I brought up, the reduction of our family planning. And I talk about quality improvement is a passion of mine and staff now are used to me bringing up, you know, that, oh, that can be a quality improvement project. We have a Workforce Development Committee and a plan. There are many staff trainings that we are required to do based on law or within our programs. And so staff are also able to bring up different requests. So this committee works on getting those staff trainings for us. And the trainings in this past year are listed here. Page 13, so these are our current 2023 CHIP accomplishments. And as I've said before, and I'm going to say again, this is a community plan. It's not just CCHHS. So you're going to see some of the items that are listed here that are community projects. We as a community, working together, that's how we make a healthier place for all of our residents. Page 14, this is an update on some of the objectives that were outlined in our last strategic plan that were accomplished in 2023. And after the CHIP is completed, as I spoke to before, we'll develop our strategic plan, which will come before this board. And we will bring a full update of what we have accomplished on this current strategic plan. So I've talked about, we've made some good strides in public health funding. We're getting ready to provide information at the state of what we're going to work on for those funds that came available for SB 118. We're not done. This was a one-year, yeah, one-year funding opportunity. We're getting ready to go back and ask that it be put in the governor's budget in 2025. And word has it right now that we'll be asking for some, for additional funding. But what our, what we need to do is show where that funding went and how it's being used to improve public funding. And I'll remind you that Nevada, we got 15 million for the whole state at the last legislative session. And as far as state public health funding, it probably took us up to 48th from 50th. So we've still have a, we still have a lot of work to do. But we're not done. And I don't have comments on any of the other pages, but I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions from the board on the 2023 Annual, Annual Report? Any public comments on the annual report?
First off, thank you very much, Chair. Denny French, thank you so much. This report is great. I have to say that I did not see opioid funding material, but that's because of my negligence, not yours probably. It's in there, I just didn't see it. Look forward to hearing how that's worked out.
So the opioid funding, this is a report for 2023. The opioid funding will be addressed in 2024.
Thank you, that's good to hear. I appreciate that. The next matter is just the amazing amount of work. I just wanted, I don't get a chance, people run out of here quick. Thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to accept the report. Would someone like to?
I move to accept the report as presented.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please, of approving the report, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I have just one little typo that I found and marked.
Okay.
I should have done it ahead of time, but it's.
That's okay.
It's there.
We appreciate that.
Let's move on to item 20D. This is discussion and possible action regarding the development of the Third Community Health Improvement Plan based on the findings of the Third Community Health Needs Assessment and the Community Health Needs Assessment Workshop scheduled for April 25. Ms. Freeman, are you going to take over or Ms. Aker going to start? Please enlighten us.
Great. Jeanne Freeman, for the record, Deputy Director for Carson City Health and Human Services. Great to be with you today, to be, have a chance to have a voice related to the Community Health Improvement Plan. And that is what I'm here to ask of you today is to give us some guidance when it comes to that Community Health Improvement Plan. So as Ms. Aker identified, we've completed that Community Health Needs Assessment. That project was led by Carson Tahoe Hospital and brought together over 50 different partners from across the region to have these conversations, the hard conversations, about what are the needs within our community. And as identified in that Community Health Needs Assessment, which is available on our website at gethealthycarsoncity.org, you can find the executive summary, which is a lot less to read, rather than 200 and some pages. It's about 25 pages, which is easier to digest. But it was identified that the four big areas that our community needs to, and our region needs to address are the access to basic needs. And there are several bullet points underneath there of what that identifies. The mental and emotional health of our community, the access to healthcare for specific populations, and then also substance use prevention, treatment, and recovery. So as I talk with you a little bit about this today, please keep those areas in mind when I'm making the ask about who you recommend to be engaged in the workshop or who you think might be key informants for us to have interviews done, that those are really kind of the big areas that we're addressing. Obviously, we're going to take a look at those who participated in the Community Health Needs Assessment and start there. But there have been things that have changed since December of 2022 within our community. And there are new partners that are here and there may be some that we didn't grasp that first time. So anything that you have, you can take a look at the list of people who participated and the agencies that participated. Feel free to reach out to us afterwards if you don't have specific comments today about who should be, should include. So when we do the Community Health Improvement Plan, it is going to be a multi-phased process. That workshop that's scheduled for April 25th, it is going to be a long workshop. It's going to be a multi, multi-hour, and I don't mean two, I mean probably closer to six, because there's a lot to discuss. When we talk about that Community Health Improvement Plan and we talk about these big areas, they are big areas in our community that we need to address. And so when we're looking at it, it's what. And so when we're looking at it, it's what is each partner already contributing? And where are those gaps still existing in order to address those bigger areas? And then it will also be a time where we charge these different partnering agencies within our community and say, now, take this back and build your strategic plan. Just like Carson City Health and Human Services is going to build our strategic plan about what our role is in those contributions, what are the others going to be doing? And then we're going to set the stage to make sure that we're getting back together on a regular basis. Not once every five years, when it's the next time to do the Community Health Needs Assessment, but getting back together on a regular basis to say, what is the progress that we're making here? What are the challenges that we're still facing? The roadblocks that we may be challenged with or need to address? And are there things that we can continue on with? Or are there things that we are abandoning? And because sometimes we try things and they work, and we adopt, and sometimes we try things and they don't work. And so we have to abandon or pivot. That's another one of those words that came out of COVID, pivot, that we need to do when it comes to how we're addressing these matters. So we have a process in place. The idea is to have the Community Health Improvement Plan in place before the end of June of this fiscal year so that we can then set forth our strategic plan. And the idea is to have our strategic plan done before the end of the calendar year so that that is in line with what the city's strategic plan is. It's also in line with some of the other things that have come out of the Community Health Needs Assessment and the Community Health Improvement Plan. Questions that you may have for me?
All right, questions for Ms. Freeman? Member White?
Seems like this is a planning process that should include the changing demographics on a daily basis of who is in Carson City. Why are they here? Where are they coming from? And in this regard, how do you address what their needs might be when they're more or less anonymous? I think also, we should look into the direct effect that folks coming here for medical procedures, emergency procedures or whatever, what's a, what's a direct effect on Carson City and the services that we're able to deliver?
Okay, any other comments? Any public comments? All right, this is not really an agenda item that we need to take action on. So if you have something to share, if something comes to us, we can email you, correct? Or if we have ideas on partners, we can, we can bring that forward, correct?
Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to final public comment. This is for, yes ma'am. Was it, do you have a public comment? Okay, this is for items that are in the purview of the Board of Health. So please go ahead.
Jeanne Freeman, for the record. I just want to say thank you to all of the different departments within Carson City. We are blessed to be able to serve as one of those departments and be the Public Health Department. But every department in the city has a role in what the overall public health is for our community. And every single department helps us be successful and helps challenge us and helps us grow. And so what we do every day at the Health Department can't be done without the impact of the other departments. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you to all of them.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment for the Board of Health? Seeing none, we are adjourned.